Okay. All right, welcome everyone. It's June 22nd at 6:01 PM. We're going to call this meeting to order. And let's go ahead and I don't think I have a couple. There it is. Okay. So Councilmember Taff, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Absolutely. Let's rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended to do our public service as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Karpinski-Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez-Taff.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Uh-oh. Okay. So can I have approval of the agenda, please? Okay. I have a movement by Vice Mayor and second by Jane Karpinski-Costa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
And I'll just briefly read the video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. And tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, June 26th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. And the meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel. And with that, the next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record.
Great. I have one speaker card from Kathy Morris. If you will please step forward and speak your piece.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There, okay. I'm sure everybody knows this, National Night Out. It's National Night Out is the first Tuesday in August every year, and it is this year, August 1st. Chayson is having an event for National Night Out at Sea By Sea Park, and it is from 6:00 to 8:00. We, of course, are Chayson, Area 7, 8, and 9, but it is a community event. They're the community, neighbors to meet each other, to socialize, and also to support our public officials, particularly the police department. And everybody's invited. Yes, we are Area 7, 8, and 9. Yes, the park is in Area 8, but everybody's invited. We want to invite the entire community, certainly the board, the council, and all of our police force, and everybody who wants to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Look forward to that. All right. Any more public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I have the next item, please. Oh, do we have any raised hands or any other statements? Okay. Great. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay. Can we start with Councilmember Middleton?
Yes, absolutely. Let's see. Over the past two weeks, I attended the Best of Citrus Heights event that was hosted by the Citrus Heights Chamber. It was a great event. We had a great turnout. It was a fully sold-out event and so much fun seeing, you know, who folks voted for and to be a support our local community. I also went and attended the graduation of this year's class of firefighters. Lots of new folks, lots of younger folks out there, you know, fighting fires, you know, protecting our communities, and really excited to see them and their families on Wednesday. I also attended several Juneteenth celebrations, one that was in Folsom and one that was at the Capitol downtown. It was a great time for us to reconnect and really discover and recognize the meaning of what Juneteenth means and how we all need to be working towards more diversity, equity, inclusion at all levels. And let's see. I also went to the California Hydrogen Leadership Summit. My colleagues know from our strategic planning session that I'm all about green energy, and it was great to see, you know, a fully hydrogen-powered semi truck. They're still just as heavy as the ones that ride on our Citrus Heights roads, so we've got to figure that part out, right? And I also did some dining in the district. I know a few meetings back, Councilmember Daniels told us we should really be out there in our communities and supporting our local businesses, so I went to Folsom Palace and was really surprised at how delicious their food was. The service was amazing, and I want to encourage everyone else in our city to make sure that they're going out and just looking at our newest establishments and supporting them so that we can keep them here. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Let's go with Dr. Jane, or sorry, Dr. Jane. So Jane Taff, what have you been up to?
All right. Yes, I also attended Best Of. I'm on the chamber board, and so that was a very successful event, and I look forward to that again. Did attend the Sacramento Board, Library Board meeting, and I wanted to make sure everyone is aware, June 13th through August 4th, they do lunches at the library, including our Sylvan Library, Tuesday through Friday, 12 to 1:00, and it's Meals for Youth under 18 and younger. So I think that's a fabulous program because we know that food insecurity is very present in all communities, and ours is no exception. So I'm very proud that they have that program happening. I had the pleasure of attending the American Legion Post 637 Installation of Officers with several of my fellow council members, and I had the opportunity today to meet with our PG&E Government Relations Representative, and really, really good to meet all of the representatives from our utilities because they're doing a lot of activity in our city. So that's it for me.
Great. Dr. Jane Karpinski-Costa, would you read your calendar, please?
I've been busy. I went to Best of Citrus Heights. I did not stay for the entire event because it was Ted's birthday, so we had to go celebrate that. But Sac Sewer, this is budget time. As you see from our agenda, we got a budget on, you know, budget approval on there, but Sac Sewer FYI serves 1.2 million people over 281 square miles, so their budget is a little thicker than the city one. From your house to the street is your laterals pipes, and then they go to collectors, which are 6.8 inches, then to trunks, which are 12 to 36 inches diameter. Then they have a series of pump stations, so a lot of the budget is for upgrading pump stations, keeping them running. And then it goes to the interceptors, which goes to the Sac Regional Sewer. And so for anyone's edification, here's your number for the day of 68,242 manholes. Thought that was cool. And so, but the budget is like $102 million. So when you think of our little scrawny budget, this is a big giant budget, and then Regional Sewer's budget is another $178 million. So there goes that budget. And today, we got notification that the California Water Commission has funded the, has gave us the grant for the Harvest Water Project of 291.9 million. These are like big numbers. So this, the Harvest Water Project is where we recycle water and use it for agriculture, thereby saving our aquifers, and the farmers don't have to pump out of the aquifers. They will get this water from recycled water. So the bad news was is that even though there is no rate increase this year in the budget, we can anticipate next year a small increase, which isn't bad considering that they haven't raised the rates in many, many years. So we've had pretty stable rates. They keep the budget as best they can so that we don't have to raise rates. So I'm really proud of that district and everything they've accomplished, and I'm proud to serve on that board. The mosquito district, we have 10 positive dead birds, and it increases every day because I, one report said we had three, and then the next report said we had 10, so I said, well, is it three or 10? Oh, that's how many we got in between the two reports. So we've had some positive mosquito pools. This is where we put traps out. We trap mosquitoes, then we test the mosquito as a group, and so we call that a pool. So the mosquito pools have been positive in Elder Creek, Natomas, and Sacramento. Now, we've talked about the invasive mosquitoes. These are the ones we really want to be notified of. They tend to live in your backyard. They're not good flyers, but they're great biters, and they like to bite during the day. If you're sitting on your patio in the daytime and you get a bite, that's not a regular mosquito. That's one we want to know about. So if you get, see a day biter, they like to bite around the ankles. They like to live in bottle caps and wait until there's some water in there. Then they, they're horrible. And so we have seen those in Natomas, Carmichael, and the Rosemont area of Sacramento. So they're out and about, and so we want you to report day biters. We want you to report neglected swimming pools that you see in the neighborhoods so that we can go and take care of those pools, which is a huge breeding source, and for sure use your repellent. STA, now there's another guy. We did a budget there. That's just another $184 million. But if you didn't have Fejuret, you wouldn't have RT. So RT gets about a third of the dollars. And I think, oh, and I went to SAICOG Blueprint. And the SAICOG Blueprint, the first thing they ask you is, what is the headline you want to read in 2050? You know, some people said, oh, Sacramento has no air pollution, or Sacramento has no unemployment. Mine was, Gina turns 104 years old. That's what I would like to see in 2050. No, so we participated in a table with people we don't know, people we don't agree with, and said, you know, how many houses do you want to put on this spot, and how many roads do you want to see? And so anyway, that was, okay, that was a fun thing. But then when I went to STA, we didn't have enough people come to the meeting to finish all our business. We needed a two-thirds vote on refunding our bonds, and people just didn't show up for the meeting. We had to, I don't know what's going to happen with that because it had to be done while the interest is at is, because by the time we have our next meeting, I think, is in August, the whole bond market may change by then. So that was kind of crappy that people don't show up for meetings. So I'm, I was there, and that was it.
Great. Thank you. So Vice Mayor Daniels.
You're welcome. It's a struggle for me to sit through budgets. That's all you did.
Vice Mayor Daniels, what have you been up to?
A few things. Along with my other councilmembers, attended Best of Citrus Heights. It was a really fun event. It was nice to see a lot of businesses get the recognition they deserve, and there's a lot of great businesses in Citrus Heights, so please get out and use them. Also, with my other councilmembers, attended the American Legion 637 Installation, Officer Installation Event, and potluck. So it's potluck, so it's good. So, but some very, very worthy and heroic people that are honored and help us out throughout the community, and greatly appreciate them. Also, with all of my other councilmembers, attended the Strategic Planning Retreat. And are we going to get anything on that today? Anything further tonight?
We'll be having the resolution to adopt the strategic objectives at the next council meeting, but I'm going to touch on that as part of my comments, too.
Excellent. But a very good time, a little hybrid kind of a thing, and it went off really well, and a lot of good discussion with my other councilmembers, staff, city manager, police chief, lots of people, really good time. Attended along with Councilmember Jane Taff, the Education Committee, as we moved forward with some of the infrastructure for our education, excuse me, our school feasibility committee. And so we'll be voting on that for our members tonight. And then, nothing on the RT board to report out. As part of my position on the RT board, I'm also on the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, and ventured down to Oakland for that meeting the other day. And only thing I'll report out of that, other than, you think you spend a lot of money. You ought to see what these guys spend.
Well, we just gave you 70 million.
Good. Well, we need, yeah, their projects right now are totaling about $619 million. But the one I'll note is the Sacramento-Roseville Third Main Track, and so that's to put a new track in there, too, so that we can have greater train service that starts in Roseville as opposed to having to go down to Sacramento and start. So a lot of funding has come in towards that. It's a $209 million project, and they're well on their way past the halfway point of getting that funded and moved, and so we'll see that one of these days. And let me see, I think that's it. Just in the future, please don't forget this coming, is it this coming Saturday? What day is today?
Week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday. Our patriotic event, fireworks are returning to Citrus Heights, and this is what we've all been waiting for, for a long, long time, and a good community event, bringing folks out to get together. It's at Van Marren Park, Saturday, July 1st, starting at 6:00 PM, and it's going to be a great time, so please come out with your family and enjoy it. That's it.
I might mention, Brett, that when RT gave their presentation, they had planned to cut some of the routing as part of their, and then they added it back in, some of the Citrus Heights and Antelope stops. So they were, the Smart Ride, they were cutting it, but when we bitched and moaned, they put some of it back in. So thanks to Mary and Regina for getting that back onto the program.
There you go. Great. So I'm going to start off by saying I really regret that I was not able to make the Best Of. I heard from all of my councilmembers and many other people that was a great event. Unfortunately, I was fighting the Mormon crickets in Elko, Nevada. If anybody knows what those are, it's a pretty horrific circumstance where they hatch, and for the next nine days, there are crickets everywhere.
Oh, my.
And it's quite, quite an event, and they mow down, hopefully you didn't put it in a lawn, or my, one of my colleagues had just put in a rose garden, and the rose garden was completely demolished by the Mormon crickets. So they're everywhere back there. So with that, I sincerely apologize for missing that one. I won't miss it next year. So I also attended the Strategic Planning Retreat that was on, we could go today, and it was a, the format was really on the money. Thank you very much, Ash, for putting that together. I think that we got a lot of, a lot of things accomplished with that. I think that our councilmembers really got an opportunity to share, you know, kind of what's on our minds and how we approach things. So it was incredibly helpful in a public setting, because it was really good. I also attended the Blueprint Workshop that happened in Folsom at the Folsom Community Center. That was an interesting, interesting event on what do we, if you had to envision, what does our community look like? What does the region look like in 2050, 27 years in the future? I venture to say it's going to look very, very different and pretty unimaginable compared to what it is today. I think that I had the opportunity to talk with the city managers this morning about what, what, what that will mean, and I think it, my personal opinion is, 27 years ago, we won't, we wouldn't, we couldn't, we'll look back and recognize. It'd be much akin to what a young toddler might look at a phone booth and say, what is that? So, so I think that that's kind of something, it was interesting to envision what the future might bring. With that, I don't know, there's something else I wanted to mention, but I am looking forward to the patriotic event. I remembered what it was. So a couple of years ago, we did a sort of emergency measure to outlaw, to go a long ways for outlawing fireworks, illegal fireworks. And I will say that from my, from where I sit in the, in my neck of the woods, I've heard two fireworks in the last two months, and they were both in the last, in recent days, and they were far away. I had the, I guess I had the luxury of one of my neighbors has moved out of the neighborhood. Maybe that's where most of the fireworks were.
He went to my neighborhood.
What's that?
He went to my neighborhood.
He moved to your neighborhood. So I, I don't know if I can chalk this up to the fireworks ordinance that we have now, but all I can say is I'm enjoying the peace. And it's funny that you, when you think about it, when something isn't there, you really have to think about whether you miss it or not. Was, is that, wow, it really occurred to me that, hey, I'm, we're sleeping at night with the, don't tell anybody, with the sliding glass door open, just the screen door closed, and, and it is quiet in my neighborhood. So I hope that, that the ordinance has had a good effect on that. So that's really all I have, so let's move on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items four, five, six, seven, and eight.
That's the, the pleasure of the council?
I don't know when I want to pull, just to make a comment.
What would you like to pull?
Let me see the number. Number six.
Number six? Okay.
Then I'll move the four, five, seven, and eight.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Karpinski-Costa, a second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So motion passes. Can we, what was your concern with the?
I just, I wanted to make a comment, and I just wanted to thank Ash and the team, the budget team, the department directors for putting together this terrific budget, and it is available now on our website for the public to see. And keep in mind that our budget reflects our core values and our city values? What else? I want to know the word, it just went that way. So it's nice to read our budget, see where we're spending our money, and then you see where our values are. And you did a great job, the whole team, and so I know there was about four people on the budget team, I think you recognized in the budget book. So thank you all for doing that such a good job.
Any other comments? Great.
And I'll move that budget approval.
And I will second that, that great job on the budget. Really, really nice to see, so. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is appointments to the Citrus Heights Education Committee, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution appointing seven members to the Citrus Heights Education Committee. And good evening, Mayor and City Council, Amy Van, the City Clerk. So following the formation and approval of the Citrus Heights Education Committee Work Plan, city staff accepted applications for the Education Committee for a period of, a two-week period. So tonight, we are presenting the applications that were distributed to the City Council. The applicants were also invited to attend the meeting tonight. But with that, the recommendation is that each council member nominate an individual to sit on the committee, and then I will have a spreadsheet that the council can then each nominate two members for the at-large positions, and then we can kind of narrow it down from there and then ask council to approve the resolution appointing the members to the Citrus Heights Education Committee.
Great. So we start with nominations, correct?
Well, we do have a public, members of the public, so if you wish to take those first.
So we have a couple of speaker cards here. Let's go with, let's call to the podium Karen Mix. You'll have five minutes to say your piece.
Just checking. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Karen Mix, and I have been a resident of Citrus Heights for about 18 years, and I just wanted to thank you for the invitation to come and speak here tonight. I am very interested in being part of the educational committee as I feel like my background uniquely suits me for this position. I have been in education since about 1996 in a variety of different roles, from elementary school teacher and specialist to vice principal, principal, and superintendent. Now I get to work for the Small School Districts Association as a consultant and work with mostly small and rural school districts across Northern California, and that has been very exciting work. I have also worked in school districts very small, from 100 students all the way up to 40,000 students, and have been part of numerous different things such as districts merging, combining, unique programs, lots of programs in and out of schools, starting things, ending things, so. And part of my role has always been providing solutions and looking for problems and providing solutions, which is how I was able to raise test scores in one of the schools where I was a principal. I've worked in a variety of different types of school districts as well, from Beverly Hills School District all the way to school districts that have had low socioeconomic status, and that has been a pleasure. Every single job has taught me things and has been a pleasure to be part of, and so I believe that all those skills will give me the unique talent of working with this team to look at and analyze data in order to see if Citrus Heights should make its own school district and be the Citrus Heights Unified School District, and welcome back some of the students that have left the community. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Tom Sheeler. Would you make your way to the podium, please?
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Tom Sheeler, 40-year resident of Citrus Heights. I look at the examination of the Citrus Heights School District as an exological step in the growth of Citrus Heights as a strong and vibrant city. I'm hoping and expecting a broad fact-based analysis looking at the issues of financial viability, physical facilities, teacher, administrative, support staff, and other issues that is free of preconceived outcomes or political ideology, political or ideological influence. But whatever the outcome of the analysis, let us not overlook the fact that student success is dependent on more than just the students. Yes, teacher quality and curriculum is very important, but support at home and in the community is essential. Students that do not have a good parental and grandparent, role models to emulate and to assist, will have much less chance of success. A safe, supportive home that is free of physical, psychological, and substance abuse is so vital, and we, the community, must strive to support our students in this regard. Teachers that, teachers cannot teach students if they're depressed, hungry, or aggressive as a result of their home life. Let us recognize this and not put the onus of student scores only on the teachers. Their responsibility is both on the students and the adults of the community. I wish this community, committee, the utmost success, no matter the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. So moving on to the next step.
So Mayor, here before the council is a listing of the 10 applications that we received, and so we would ask first if each council member will nominate their individual appointment. I'll mark those on the spreadsheet, and then we can look to the remaining applicants for the at-large positions.
Okay. So can we start with Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes, thank you. I would like to, my nominee to be Jeanne Burns.
Okay. So let's go with, how about, how about you, Jane? Who'd you, who'd you like to nominate?
I would like to nominate, and not because she spoke tonight, Karen Mix.
Councilmember Daniels?
John Kane.
John Kane? And Jane Karpinski-Costa?
My top two are taken, so I'll go to my number three is Jessica Fork. Jessica.
And I'd like to nominate Tom Sheeler. Okay. So now we come down to nominations for the additional positions. Let's start with Portia Middleton?
Oh, okay.
Let's go with Jane Taff.
Are we doing one or two here?
If you have up to two, because there are two at-large positions.
Yeah, we're doing two.
Sorry, I, I should know that. Laura, Laura Wilbur.
Jane?
I'll submit Robin Stout and Laura Wilbur.
Dr. Jane?
I do Catherine Marash and Robin Stout.
Vice Mayor?
Jim Remick and Robin Stout.
And I will nominate Trish Dawson and Robin Stout. Okay, what's the next step?
So, now, there's a resolution before the council, so if you're ready to take a nomination. And it appears that for the at-large, Robin Stout, and we have a tie between Laura Wilbur and Catherine Marash, so if council would like to deliberate.
Can we just keep the two that tied on there, Mr. Mayor? Or do we have to separate those two?
I think we just.
Expand the.
I think we.
Expand your committee by one member?
No.
No?
No. Better pick one. So, certainly, I'd like them to, so now we go through the nomination process again based on those two, correct?
Well, so there's a resolution that's being recommended that will encompass the council's individual appointments as well as the two at-large.
Okay.
So, the motion can be the council's five appointments and then picking two of the at-large.
So, that's where we're at. We're, we're, we have two, the two at-large people are tied.
Correct.
So, we need to do a tiebreaker?
Correct.
So, of those two people, do we, I'm going to ask for nominations of those two, of one of those two people. So, can we start with you, Portia? Which one of the two would you like to see?
Catherine Marash.
And Jane?
I will go with Laura Wilbur.
Jana?
Catherine Marash.
Vice Mayor?
Wilbur.
And I will also go with Wilbur.
So, did I capture that correctly? It should be three. Councilmember Middleton, did I get, was it?
No, it was.
It was Marash, that's right. Which already had a one there, so yes.
Okay, that should decide it.
That's it.
Okay. So, we'll just need a motion for the resolution.
So, do we have a resolution? What's the, adopt a resolution? So, I'll go ahead and read the motion. Adopt a resolution, a resolution, City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, authorized the city manager execute agreement, nope, sorry, that was the wrong one, my apologies. Adopt a resolution, a resolution, City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, appointing seven members to the Citrus Heights Education Committee. That's a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
So, the next item is regular calendar, item number 10, overview and discussion of objective design and development standards for the Auburn Boulevard Special Planning Area. The recommendation is to review and discuss the proposed objective design and development standards for the Auburn Boulevard specific plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Casey Kempinare, your Community Development Director. Here tonight to, I'll be giving you a brief overview and then we'll turn the nuts and bolts to experts. We have Allison Bermudas, our Senior Planner, as long as consultants from Opticoast Design Group, who will help answer questions and kind of frame this discussion. As you know, traditionally, local governments had wide discretion over development projects and making sure that they adhere to what the community's vision is and what our expectations are. Most of these expectations are conveyed in development standards that are applicable to projects that come in, in our different corridors. Some of these standards, such as height, setback, and density are very, you know, black and white. They either meet the standard or they don't. But other standards we have in our existing Auburn Boulevard plan are subjective. For example, one of these is, projects shall support the district's role as a city gateway, or walking edges of buildings shall provide visual interest. So, that can mean something totally different from council member to council member, or staff member to staff member. So, as part of the state's efforts to kind of pull back local control from housing decisions, there's been a really big focus on taking away the subjectivity and prohibiting cities from denying projects based on subjective standards. As you know, last year, 40 laws were passed around housing reform, and really, they were focused on accelerating housing and also incentivizing housing and also limiting factors that some cities were using to slow down projects or not allow projects. So, really, one of those big focuses has been on eliminating the ambiguity that's around our design standards or just statewide design standards. And that really created this suite of laws that required these objective standards where there's no subjectivity, that anyone can make a determination whether it meets that standard or not. So, luckily, although the legislature did pull back a lot of our local control, they didn't say exactly how to do that. So, we have some ability to tailor our standards to make sure they meet our existing standards. So, we already have design standards in the Boulevard plan, we just need to convert them to be objective. So, that's kind of what the crux of what we're getting at tonight is making sure that we're transitioning these longstanding standards that have been in the Boulevard plan since it was adopted in 2005, and we're converting them to objective. And that's why we have Opticoast Design Group here, to help us do that work of translating something that's really loose into something that's really, really, has a fine point on it. Absent these changes, if we were to get an application today for one of these state housing laws that are intended to accelerate housing, we would only be able to apply our existing standards that are objective. So, those are generally height, setback, intensity, so density. But anything else that really makes a difference in how a building looks, if you, just apply those, you get this big ugly block, right? If you wanted to have more subjective standards that talked about things that make a difference in how a building looks, such as massing or articulation, we would not be able to apply those. So, a developer could come in with a really ugly building and we would be generally prohibited from denying that project, no matter how it appeared. So, it's really important that we have some standards so we can continue to, if we do get these applications, they still adhere to what our expectations are for the community. And it's really important to get this started sooner rather than later. Ranch of Cordova, Davis, Elk Grove, Folsom are all seeing these type of applications coming in, and it's just a matter of time before we see one or two. As council's seen, Elk Grove's actually being sued right now by a developer and the state. And one of the premises of their lawsuit, it has to do with the objective standards. So, it's really important and it's a real-world thing that's happening. One final note, we have generally, or oftentimes, to the council's chagrin, we've seen these state mandates come in without a funding source. For once, we were able to, we do have some grant funding that's specifically allocated for housing-related efforts. So, we were lucky to get a LEAP grant, which is local early action planning, but we're on the tail end of that, and we need to expand that and wrap this project up by September. So, there is, you know, a definite urgency to get this adopted, and that's why we're here tonight. So, next steps are, these are specific to Auburn Boulevard, just the function of the way the grant worked out, but we also need to bring this back to the council as a citywide policy, so applies elsewhere in the city, because now housing's allowed in any zone as a result of the state's efforts. So, we'll be bringing those back later this summer as well. So, tonight, I want to introduce Stefan Pellegrino for Opticoast Design Group. He's going to, he's done work, Opticoast does this type of work all over the state and has really kind of taken this on head-on and made changes to make sure that we're getting these objective standards, but also keeping our community's vision intact. So, I'll have Stefan give a little bit of an overview about what, you know, what the state of the state is.
Thank you, Casey. Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, and members of the council, and thank you for hosting us tonight. I'm Stefan Pellegrini, I'm a principal with Opticoast Design. I'm a planner and an architect, and we've been working closely with staff on the objective design standards. All jurisdictions in California have been compelled to comply with the suite of state laws to accelerate and produce housing across the state. And so, the position that Citrus Heights is in is a very common one. We've had the opportunity to work with jurisdictions all over the state who are trying to implement objective design standards, but we are also looking at best practices from across the country. Many cities and other states as well are dealing with housing issues and state laws that are being passed elsewhere. We are seeing similar trends occur. It's very good that the work that you're doing is helping to sort of stay ahead of the curve of state law and help to maintain local control around the sort of form and character of what gets built in Citrus Heights. And I would say that it's important to think about how the objective standards can actually provide a balance. They can provide an avenue for predictive development, development that's predictable, but it also needs to be, provide a degree of flexibility for developers and applicants so that you can get different outcomes, architectural diversity, and also applicants can actually produce something that is feasible from a development standpoint and also constructible. And so, we look for that balance in the standards that we write. The information in the Auburn Boulevard specific plan was a great start, but to Casey's point, we needed to actually bring other things that actually were not objective to the standpoint of being objective. And we feel sort of good about the position that we're in, that you'll sort of learn tonight, as Caroline, my associate, will review the work that we've done to date. The last thing I still will mention is that a state law has been sort of an evolving factor in this. This is also a common situation where cities are adopting objective design standards. State law then compels them to expand the geography or apply those objective design standards to other parts of the city. And so, there is an opportunity here to continue this work beyond the Auburn Boulevard specific plan and apply it to the other commercial corridors in the community. And we're seeing a lot of other cities take this incremental approach in response to state law. So, I look forward to your questions tonight and furthering this discussion with you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division tonight, along with Caroline. And we've been working on this project together to bring these standards to you. So, we're pleasurable to be here to present and discuss with you what our objective design standards are and how they will intermix with the current Boulevard plan. Earlier, when this project started, we called it Retail for Rooftops, so I just left that reference on there, so it kind of, you'd say, oh yeah, well, I remember talking about that a while ago. So, this is that program. So, tonight, we're going to briefly touch on the outreach that we've done. We started this project last year and what we've done to date. And then we'll get a little bit deep dive into what are objective design standards. Casey and Stefan gave you a great overview, but we'll dive a little bit into what they are and what's their purpose. And we'll give, Caroline will walk through the booklet overview of how the booklet is going to be laid out and what it will contain, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So, this project, as I mentioned, started last year. April, we started with a workshop. We had three property owners of Auburn Boulevard properties that we thought could potentially redevelop into housing. So, we selected those property owners, we met with them in a group setting, provided them a variety of options if, you know, your site redeveloped. Here are some things that could happen. What do you like? What do you don't, you know, what do you dislike? You know, parking, articulation, things like that. And it was a great work session that we had with them. They gave a lot of feedback, and then their comments were incorporated into the booklet. We also set up a webpage so the public would know what we were doing, especially future developers. We want them to be able to follow our progress. So, if they were considering a project on Auburn Boulevard, nothing would be a surprise. So, they've been able to kind of follow the project along. There's been a few newspaper articles that have came out on it, a few stories about what we've been doing. And then in March, we did present this to the Planning Commission, so they have reviewed it as well. So, let's talk about what are objective design standards. And Casey gave a great overview, but this is right out of the government code, it is part of the government code. And basically, it says something that there's no personal judgment or subjective government, I mean, subjective judgment. So, it's very clear, it's written, it's precise, and we're going to interpret it the same way. So, that's how they define what are objective design.
Allison, a question?
Standards, yes.
Why did they put the word in "public official"? I mean, it's.
Why? I don't know. What it means is you're going to interpret this standard the same way as your other council member would. So, public official, staff member, anybody could interpret the standard the same.
So, it's broad, it's very broad?
It's very specific. So, the standard is very specific.
When I read it at first, I thought it meant more towards us.
Oh, people, I'll get you.
As opposed to staff. But you're saying it encompasses everybody?
So, everybody, a developer, public, staff member, anyone interpreted the same. All right, and what's their purpose? As we talked about, they really are a tool, they were, you know, started to streamline applications. We've all heard of the applications that will come in and be submitted to a jurisdiction, and they sit for months and months and sometimes years, and they don't progress. And so, this objective design standards is put into place and a requirement, and it kind of forces the movement of applications. So, when application is submitted, those objective design standards are available to the developer, so they're very clear on what their project has to do. So, it really is this criteria, this tool. Recent state legislation, they're all incorporating the use of objective design standards, as we've mentioned. And they are another tool to implement our design guidelines. So, in this framework, we have the design guidelines of the Auburn Boulevard plan, but as mentioned, they're design guidelines. So, these objective standards are help in them implementing those guidelines. And it does, you know, provide some certainty to a developer. If they've done their research, they've read the design guidelines, they have read the design standards, then when they submit a project, if they followed that, they should feel very comfortable that their project would go through the process because they have met what has been outlined, so it's very clear. So, kind of a overview of design guidelines versus objective standards, how they are different. As mentioned, design guidelines are very subjective. They use a lot of language like, you know, recommend articulation or recommend colors that are, you know, blending with the community. So, very subjective wording in design guidelines. They're not really measurable. As Casey mentioned, I could interpret them differently than he may interpret them, so they're very free-flowing. Where the objective standards, they will support the design guidelines and allow the streamlined review by providing measurable verbiage, quantifiable numbers, they're easily defined, and they can be enforced. So, that's the difference between the two types.
So, when it comes to specifically, if we were looking for a specific look, say, down Auburn Boulevard, are we barred from looking at that, saying, okay, we kind of want this neighborhood or this, this business, business district to look like it's an organized planning program rather than just a hodgepodge of stuff? Are we, are we, when we're committing to this, are we saying that we can't have it look a specific way?
We can have a, the guideline, or the standards have measurable standards in them, but there also is room for uniqueness and ability. So, it doesn't force them to do it a certain way, but if they are going to do it, then they have to meet these standards. Is that, can you explain it better?
Yeah, are you, is your question whether the standards are capable of producing a certain building form or?
Exactly.
Yeah.
When I look at this, I say, okay, well, if a developer comes in and they say, well, we want to build it like this, but it's out of character for the rest of the entire district, do we have the ability to say, no, we really want the district to have a certain atmosphere, so a certain particular type of way that, that we want the district to look so that it is inviting or whatever the, whatever the, whatever we. so that it is inviting or whatever the, whatever the, whatever we, when it comes down to that we're designing that particular district, that it's, that we have a way that we want this to look rather than just have somebody come in and say, oh, I want, I like this design.
Yes.
And, and it just doesn't look like it, like there was any planning involved.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's kind of the, I guess, the short answer is yes, you can do that, but only if you have the objective standards in place. And so the, the goal, and I'll get into this in a bit, but the goal is to basically create those objective standards so that you do have the teeth to do that.
So you can be subjectively objective.
If I might, just to clarify, this only applies to housing projects too. So commercial projects would still follow the existing design guidelines, which do have some general parameters around, you know, what look should be. But we're not like, you know, maybe like a Santa Barbara, you have to have red tile roofs. We're not, we've never been that specific. And so I think our, what the objective standards do is, again, bring those subjective standards to our.
Regarding housing, but we're talking about primarily, right now, Auburn Boulevard.
Is commercial.
Is a commercial zone.
Right.
But they can come in on any commercial zone and stick housing without being.
That's correct. Yeah, I believe it was AB six basically said that housing can go on any.
But our plan only has housing in a certain spot, right? Not down all the way down the Boulevard.
Well.
Our plan.
The plan, yes, does, but the, the state law, the, I think is AB six. Could be any lot anywhere.
Front to back, right.
Correct. Yeah.
Thanks, Casey.
So some of the tools that are used to create these objective design standards are really counts and measurements. So we include a lot of height, distances, setbacks. So things can be counted. They can be measured. Those are objective. Our ratios, we talk about roof pitch. You know, you have a 412 pitch. You can have different roof pitches. So they're very measurable and quantifiable. We provide checklists of applications, saying this is what your application submitted needs to include. We can do scorecards. And so there's other performance measures and benchmarks used. So that helps an applicant and a developer, when they submit, they can submit an application that meets all these measurements and it helps that streamline process because we are obligated under much of the legislation to process applications in certain timeframes. And so it's really beneficial if that application is meeting all the marks. The checklist really help the applicant, as well as staff, that our applications that we received are complete and help us keep on our required timelines. So those are all tools that are used for this objective design standard process and streamlining of application.
So the entire Boulevard would look the same? Look like projects? Like I grew up in the projects. They'd look like projects.
Well, hopefully our objective design standards will, there's enough in there to give variety and we'll really be upgrading. We can show you some of the differences when we get into it. So as we mentioned, there's been several legislative actions that have got, that have brought us to this point. This actually started back when the Housing Accountability Act was adopted in 1982. They talked about objective design standards. It just kind of sat in the law and was never used or put in other legislation. And then in 2017, with SB 35 and some of the other legislative actions, they started implementing objective design standards, you know, and they were looking for ways to streamline housing projects. So then objective design standards have been incorporated into many of the legislative acts that you see here, that are significant ones as well as many other. So we are really kind of catching up to legislation that's been, you know, passed starting back in 2017. That's how I describe it. This is my layered cake theory. Really, when we start this, when you look at where we are in housing and developing and objective design standards, planning has really become this cake. And the legislature is kind of the bottom, the base. We're getting laws and legislation passed down to us that we have to comply with, setting the standards. We then, as a city and a community, have our general plan that we look, you know, our future development, where we're going to be, you know, over the next 20, 25 years. So we incorporate that and we set out those policies. And then our zoning code kind of takes that and finds it to a little bit more, more specifically. And then we have our specific plan areas. We have the Auburn Boulevard plan. We have the Sunrise Tomorrow plan. So that even narrows that, that top layer down a little bit. And then these objective design standards are kind of the top. So all these different actions kind of have to mesh together and build on top of each other. And it's all the information through the general plan, the zoning code, and the specific plans that are used to really develop and create this top layer that we're presenting the objective design standards. And as Casey mentioned, these are only going to apply, only apply to residential projects. As I mentioned, they're trying to streamline housing developments that are in the pipelines throughout the state. So these are applicable to multifamily projects and to mixed-use projects. Tonight, we're specifically talking about ones that would file for the Auburn Boulevard plan in the Auburn Boulevard area. That's where the design standards that we have, or development standards we have tonight are referencing. And then, and so a developer could come in and they want to submit an application under SB 35, SB 330, which some of the other legislative actions. And then they would get that streamlined review. If they request that streamlined review, then these objective standards would come into play. The developer does have the choice if they want to submit an application for a multifamily project or mixed-use project, but they want to just use the design guidelines. And they want to, they're not asking for the streamlined review. Maybe some of those streamlined reviews have an affordability component to them or they have prevailing wage. They have some other uniqueness about them and they don't want to comply. They just want to submit housing. Then they could forego that and they could just submit under our traditional methods that we use today, using the design guidelines and interactions with staff and consultations with staff to get the project that we're looking for. So those are kind of two differences of how development on Auburn Boulevard to residential could come about. And as Casey mentioned, you know, these, this does not apply to commercial projects. So we're only talking residential. So many of the legislation that passed for that streamlined review really allowed the project to be processed ministerially instead of through discretionary review. And so a ministerial project would be a project that is submitted, reviewed by staff. It's reviewed against objective design standard, standards. If it meets all those, then it's basically stamped approved and it moves on to the Building Department or whatever the next steps would be, that it would receive its entitlements. There would be no public hearing. There may not be any actions before the Planning Commission or the City Council have done at a ministerial level. That's why those objective standards are very important. If the project is discretionary, that means it would go through staff review and would come through the traditional hearing process. So those are the two types of processes that could occur with the project. And we're going to talk about this a little bit more, but this might answer some of the questions that you had. But just to give you an overview, if you look at this slide, the picture on the left is the Boulevard plan. So if you had a house, if we had a housing project come in today and they wanted to file an application using one of those legislative actions, the streamlined review, the ministerial approval, and then we could only apply our defined objective standards that are in the Boulevard plan today. So taking the, what's in there that we can consider objective standards, you would get a project that looks like what's on the left because the design guidelines have very few objective standards. So what we're getting at now with adopting this more expanded objective design standards, we could require the project on the right. So we're going to get more articulation. We're going to get second-story balconies. We're going to get some porches pop out. So it's a quite a bit different project considering that they're both using objective design standards, but one is using the current ones that are found in the plan, which we would be held to, and then the one on the right using the ones that we're proposing. So that kind of gives you a framework of what this, what the booklet could do. So now I'm going to turn it over to Caroline, who has worked on many of the, most of the booklet details, and she'll walk through what will be in there.
Thanks, Allison. So I'm going to walk through some of the key content of the Auburn Boulevard booklet and the objective design standards it contains and also give you a little bit more context. So I'm going to walk through four things. First, illustrate the subjectivity in the current Boulevard plan. Introduce some of the types of objective standards that are used in this document. And then review some of the key content, what the standards are actually intending to do. And then give, return to an example that Allison just shared about how the build outcomes would be different under these objective standards than they would be if we kind of do the do-nothing scenario, if we keep things as they are today. So first, just to, again, reiterate some of what's been said about the Boulevard plan. And I want to start by kind of offering a word in, in defense of the Boulevard plan. It's a great document. It was produced through a robust community process and it did what it intended to do. You know, it presents a vision for a pedestrian-oriented, kind of human-scaled environment that nevertheless, like, envisions new development along Auburn Boulevard. But as the quote on the top says, you know, "It was intending to provide qualitative as opposed to quantitative requirements." So it was never intending to be objective, and it wasn't. And at the time that it was written, it was okay. But now, in light of the new state laws that Allison spoke about, unfortunately, that means that for streamlined applications, this no longer has any teeth. So the city wouldn't be able to really enforce any of these components of the vision, such as buildings shall be cited and designed to reinforce the pedestrian experience or residential design features shall enhance the expression of individual units and houses. Those are both really great things and the community was behind those components of the vision. So we took our task as creating objective design standards to actually enforce those components of the vision. So Allison introduced some of the ways that, some of the types of tools that can be objective. So I just want to kind of illustrate the different ways and kind of walk you through the different ways that we can regulate these form elements objectively. So the first is building form. And we can do this, two of the key ways are height, that's numerical, that's kind of black and white. And then building footprint. So kind of how, how wide, how deep is the, is the building footprint? Building placement is another one. And this has to do with where the building is situated on the lot. So how far back is it set? And something called the facade zone, which basically means that the building, a portion of the facade needs to be set fairly close to the street or whatever, whatever setback is, is established. Some of the building has to be set there and not, you know, 60 feet back with a parking lot in front. But it actually has to bring the building to the intended, intended setback. Another one is encroachments. So for things like stairs or kind of galleries or overhangs or entry ramps, we can regulate these numerically to make sure that things encroach or don't as much as we want. Parking placement, location of driveways, screening. These are all things that can be regulated numerically and objectively. And then frontages. Frontages are those elements on the ground floor in the front of the building facing the sidewalk or the public realm that pedestrians interact with, things like porches or storefronts. And these can also be regulated numerically and objectively. And we've written standards to, to implement those aspects of the Boulevard plan vision as well. And then another part of the objective standards, and I'll go into more detail on this in a second, but massing and facade articulation has a few components that really focus on, especially for larger buildings, for longer facades, how to break those facades down so that they're not that monolithic image that Allison just showed you. All right. So with those tools in mind, they kind of come together to, to create this booklet. So these tools are implemented through eight chapters. But tonight, I'm just going to focus on two of them and just introduce some of that content. And I encourage you, I'm sure you'll all review the document at your leisure, but this is just a quick intro. So the first.
Is there a chapter on landscaping or are you just sticking buildings on a sidewalk? Or you have, I don't see landscaping standards.
Yeah, so landscaping standards would lean on the.
Chapter they have.
The existing zoning code. So those would, those aren't specific to.
Chapter which one?
So, so there are, we kind of go back and forth between Ally's layered cake, you know, so there are some standards within the zoning code that are applied, such as landscaping and tree spacing. And those are already objective. So that isn't really focused in here. This is more focused on architectural and that side.
The booklet won't include any of that. You have to go back to the other plan?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that's objective.
So the objective design standards include two different zones. And if you're familiar with the Boulevard plan, you might remember that the Boulevard plan was organized into several different districts and each district had a different design vision. So similarly, this objective design standards booklet has identified a few different types of environments, right? Auburn Boulevard is quite a long corridor. So to the earlier question, the vision is not that it will all look the same. So the purple spots on the map are what are envisioned as kind of a Main Street environment. In other words, a lot of the commercial activity and kind of, commercial activity and I'll illustrate later what kind of a Main Street environment, what we mean when we say that. But those would be the centers of that commercial activity. Whereas the yellow parts of the map, those stretches between the Gateway Commercial Center and Rush Park and Sylvan Corners, those already today tend to have smaller lots, kind of house-scale buildings. And that kind of more residential character would be preserved. So the first of the two zones is a neighborhood zone. And on the bottom, you can see an image of some of the types of buildings and features that, that would be allowed in this zone. And so the idea is that it would be small to medium footprint, moderate intensity housing choices, including things like a triplex or a small courtyard building or townhouses. And here are some photos of those building types that are allowed in the objective design standards. Another important way to create the, a certain type of environment, I mentioned frontages before. So each zone has a specific list of frontage types that are allowed, that are then kind of regulated with numerical standards. So these are the types of, this is kind of the subset of the menu that's allowed in the T4 neighborhood zone. Things like projecting porches, door yards, four courts. And then, since there's some grade change in certain parts of Auburn Boulevard, we've included a terrace type which can help accommodate that grade change. The Main Street zone is the other of the two zones. So this is envisioned to have slightly larger footprint buildings, moderate intensity, mostly three stories with one kind of four-story overlay zone at the northern end in the Gateway Commercial Center. And these are the, the building types that are allowed in this zone. So again, like I think Casey mentioned and Allison, these standards are only going to be triggered by. by projects that come in with a residential component. So that's why you're not seeing, you know, commercial buildings, purely commercial buildings as part of this, this menu. So all of these are either residential or mixed use with a residential component, things like stacked flats or a Main Street building. And that would be a case where you have a commercial or office space on the ground floor and then residential for some portion of what's above. The frontage types are different in this, in this zone to help produce a different kind of environment. So there's some overlap. But here, we have shop fronts, and we have galleries, types of frontages that create a more intensive Main Street feel that can encourage, you know, pedestrians to interact with, with the business inside and things like shop fronts that will have a lot of glazing, where there's a lot of visual connection between the sidewalk and what's inside. So I mentioned I would give an overview of two different chapters. So here's the second one. It's Chapter Five, Massing and Facade Articulation Standards. And this table, the main, the main idea here is that the longer a building gets, the more of these standards apply. So if you already have, you know, a, a small duplex, it will be less than 75 feet wide, and none of these standards will apply. It's already sort of at an appropriate scale. It's not going to feel monolithic or overwhelming. But if you have a building that's 150 feet wide, more of these standards will apply. So the first of the types of standards is massing and composition. So these apply to any building 75 feet or longer. And the idea is that rather than it being all kind of one thing, there's some kind of bay rhythm, either three, five, or seven bays. And there are specific ways that you can express that, that pattern. Another way is tripartite facade articulation. Basically, it has a base, middle, and top.
Before we get too far, and we're, we're talking about a specific kind of, we're talking about all different kinds of, of buildings and structures that seem to be very up close to the street with no, little to no parking. Or the parkings around the back, which is, creates a safety issue from, when you have parking, parking around the back out of the visibility of the general public. It creates a, a zone where more crimes can occur without being detected. So are we adopting this plan tonight? Is this what the plan is? We're, we're going to just put, you know, again, it seems like there's a, we're just not accommodating for automobile use or parking there.
So what I would say is the Boulevard Plan was built on a premise where that, that was the type of vision that was established of what you're describing, where parking's to the rear, and it's, you know, a mixed-use environment. So I think what this does is, is bring that into these objective standards. It's not really changing the overall vision or intent. It's just making us legally compliant. I think tonight's purpose is to hear feedback from the council on this, and we'll come back at a future meeting and bring the booklet, booklet. We will be emailing the booklet out to you, so you can have time to digest it more as well. We really wanted to give you an overview. There's a lot to digest here, tripart-
Yes, no question.
Where I can even say it, but there's a lot to digest here. So we wanted to get your feedback and, and share you the nuts and bolts. And then, you know, as we, as you get to dive into the booklet, please reach out, and we're happy to go over it with you more-
When you say the booklet, what is the booklet?
It's basically a, a document that we'll be adopting.
The one that we used to have, we throw away and get a new one?
No, we'll use them in tandem, but this is, this booklet-
Why can't it be one booklet with everything in it?
I would love that. But unfortunately, there's a variety of reasons why we need to keep them separate. But the, this, this will be, this will be, if someone says, "Hey, I wanted to use one of these streamline laws," this is the book they get.
Oh.
If they want to fall under our existing rules, they go into the old book.
The old zones that we had, the hotel zone, remember? And we had it, gone, right?
Those are still there. No, this is just if someone wants to do a housing project, the state said you can put housing anywhere. This, these are the rules you would follow. If you're using the streamline. If you're not using the streamlined provisions, you want to just go the old-fashioned way, that's still an option as well.
Thanks, Casey.
Thanks, Casey. Okay, we're almost done. So another component of these facade articulation standards are something called architectural recessions. So you can see in the photo, there's a part of the building that steps back. And some of the frontage types, like the four-court frontage type, also can be kind of incorporated into this, this form. Windows and openings are another component. So once your building hits 100 feet or longer, there are particular numerical standards that certain window bays must follow to help give some dimension to the building. And then the last one, it's not a requirement, but once your building gets 150 feet long or greater, you have the option to incorporate a corner element just to introduce some visual interest along this corridor in a large building to help kind of create a gateway element. Okay, so with all of that in mind, I'm going to return to some of the images that Allison shared. So again, this is, this is what could happen under kind of the do-nothing scenario. If someone comes in with a streamlined application, and all you have in your toolkit is the current Auburn Boulevard specific plan, the Boulevard Plan. This is kind of all that you could force the applicant to do. There's, there's a height limit, and there's kind of a setback, but that's pretty much it as far as form standards. This model was basically taking that previous image and simply applying the objective standards that are in this new booklet. So you have things like the building length is limited, you have certain frontage types that are required, you have insets and projections. And, oh. There are a couple, okay, yeah, that's it. So, yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, go for it, Allison.
All right, so how's that for a mouthful? It's a lot, huh?
It's a lot, isn't it?
So thank you for giving us the time to walk through this, to kind of set the stage for, you know, what's to come. As mentioned, this is going to be coming back before you at the next meeting or two for formal adoption. And sharing of the booklet will come. But I really wanted to kind of put it out there, what we've been working on, where we're at, why we're doing this, and to kind of get any early feedback. We will take any comments that you have, work them into the final product, and hopefully be back to you on July 13th for adoption. As mentioned, this is not, if we get an application in tomorrow, we're kind of in a, in a spot where we don't have our toolkit complete and full. So we do want to get this complete and filled up. And as mentioned, the same thing will occur a little bit down the road as a citywide. The legislation is allowing residential and all commercial zones. So as you know, we have a lot of commercial areas in the city. This particular one focused on Auburn Boulevard, but we will doing pretty much a mirror image of this for the rest of the commercial areas in the city, and that will be to you in the next couple of months. So that's what we're looking for down the road. So at that, with that, we'll conclude. Answer any outstanding or remaining questions that you have. And if not, we will see you back here next month.
Any, got any questions or clarifications from council? No, not for you. Jane? No? Dana?
So I have some real deep concerns for a couple of things. The first one is that, you know, we're the most densely populated area in the Sacramento region. I shouldn't say these words, but the truth is, we don't need more people living in Citrus Heights. That's the bottom line. And so we have to do certain things and certain things we don't have to do. So I just want to get some clarification. Are we required to allow buildings higher than two levels, two stories?
Right now, the plan does allow, for sure.
That's not what I said, Casey. I said, are we required to allow buildings more than two stories?
I think that-
Want to come back on that one?
I'll think about it, but I, I mean, so I would just want to caution. So the state did say you have objective standards. They didn't say you could do whatever you want with them. So, so what I, the state's lens, putting my state hat on, was you don't want to make it so devolvent, it's not feasible. Or not, it doesn't pencil out. So I would be a little bit worried about that. But that's something, I mean, I think we do have a little bit of discretion there. I think we'd have to be pretty careful about that.
Okay, so I would certainly support a restriction on two levels. Again, when I think about Auburn Boulevard and I think about, you know, multi-level buildings and, and just more and more and more, we got the houses that are coming in on the Sylvan Project soon. It, we can get to ridiculous really soon and really quick. And so I just don't think we should allow that. And then the other thing is, are we allowed to set a standard for how far back any residential property must be from the roadway? I have a real deep concern. Auburn Boulevard's, it's a highway. People do 50, 60 miles an hour down that road. And I think it's a real disservice if we have control over the fact that we could require a setback from the roadway for any residential property on the lower level of something like, you know, 50, 60 feet, whatever. But it should be something that's where if a vehicle just simply loses control, hopefully it'll stop by the point, you know, if it goes into a skid or whatever. But putting something that allows a, a person's front door, a bedroom, a living room, some kid's, you know, baby nursery to be 20 feet from a roadway or whatever, it's just ludicrous. So I would really like to see us have in there something that says, you have to, you're only allowed to be within, you know, 50 feet of the roadway, 60 feet of the, whatever. Something that pushes it well back from the roadway.
So I'd like to request, so it's my understanding from this meeting that we do have a, a specific plan that outlines the kinds of property similar to what we have for Sunrise Tomorrow. I haven't reviewed that. That certainly was passed long before I came onto council. And I certainly would like to review that as we're looking at this process and have a better understanding of what that really means and how this, how some of these objective standards that we're talking about will impact that. So I'd certainly like to request, can I have access to, to what the plan is, what that looks like, so that I can study it and kind of give you a lot more feedback, potentially, on what this, how this really will impact and, and how we can comply with the law and still have a, enhance the quality of life in Citrus Heights instead of created more stress living here.
Sure, well, late this week or early next week, we, what we can do is email out the council, the, a link to the existing Auburn Plan as well as the objective design standards as they, as they exist today as, as draft form. And then, yeah, we would be happy to meet with you to go over any-
Thanks, Casey, really appreciate that.
I hope we never have a building that looks like any of those buildings. They're horrible. You open the front door and throw your kid out front to play? Where's he play? Where, where's the space for the living? Where do you live, besides in the little apartment? Where do you live? In the back? What's back there? Parking. It's horrible.
Okay, all right. Are we ready to move on?
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
Next item is Department Reports, item number 11. The subject is the presentation on the Citrus Heights Stars and Stripes Celebration to be held July 1st, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Director. It's my pleasure to bring to you this evening the update in preparation for the Stars and Stripes Celebration that we have scheduled in T-minus nine days. So nine days from right now, we'll be rocking out over at Van Marren Park.
All right.
So we've heard from the community over the last couple of years, especially coming out of COVID, there's just this dire need and desire to have more events here in Citrus Heights to kind of bring back some of the old that we used to do and be able to provide for opportunities for our community to engage with each other. And so we are happy that earlier in the year, council did direct staff and approved of an allocation of funds to be able to hold our first inaugural Citrus Heights Stars and Stripes Celebration. So what to expect? Entertainment, of course, food, fireworks, and fun. So entertainment for all. This is a, a family-friendly event. We have worked with, on an outfit, for lack of a better word, for music. So we will have radio DJ music that will be starting at 6 o'clock. So from 6:00 to 7:00, kind of a soft opening as folks are arriving. We will have a live band, C.C. Seeger, so a tribute band to Creedence Clearwater Revival. And Bob Seeger will be playing from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m., with a small break in between. We will also have a kids' zone, starting at 6:00 until 9:00. We will have face painting provided by our Citrus Heights Pageant Queens. We'll be doing face painting. We have coloring. We will be highlighting our CARES Campaign coloring books. We also have flower planting, so kids can come over and decorate a little flower pot with some stickers and, and markers and be able to plant a little flower and take home with them. We will have bike decorating for families that live close by, where it's conducive for them to ride their bikes over here. We'll have bike decorating. And with our Citrus Heights PAL team, they will be out there with games, and we'll be ready to set up for a little bike rodeo if we have enough interest and enough, a little mini cyclists out there. So food for purchase, we will have onsite and ready at 6:00. Bring your empty bellies. We'll have Dub's Lunchbox, Hefty Gyros, Kato's Asian Grill, Kiki's Chicken and San Tacos for some dinner. And of course, what kind of an event can you have without having dessert? So we'll have Daisy's Desserts, Kona Ice, and Forni's Kettle Corn. And of course, fireworks. So we have a 20-minute firework display, starting at 9:45 will be our launch. It's a professional display that was designed specifically for our event, and we will be having multiple locations where we will be launching from. Of course, the concern has been traffic and parking, and this is kind of a intimate location over here, much different than what was held over at Sunrise Mall in previous years. But nonetheless, we've tested the waters when we had our 20-year celebration, and so we know that we can accommodate a pretty large crowd over here. So we will be closing our streets to through traffic, starting at 4:00 p.m. And those closures will start over on Stock Ranch, just past Soulway. So the residents up in that north residential neighborhood will still be able to access their neighborhood. And then we'll be blocking off Fountain Square, right outside of our south driveway. So residents who live across the street in Aspen Ranch community, they will be able to access through that gate, similar again to what we did for the 20-year. So this is kind of a map of the area. As you can see, kind of busy, but all of the pink are designated parking areas. We've worked with the Heights Church. We've worked with the Surgery Center, as well as Dignity, to be able to provide for parking. And then, of course, we have parking at our police department, both on the South Lot and the North Green Lot. We will have some parking available around the community center. And then we have designated ADA parking here over at the City Hall campus. We have about 52 ADA spots available. We will also have staff with golf carts. So we'll have golf carts going around between these immediate neighborhoods and these parking lots, being able to pick folks up who need a ride to and from. And we also have shuttle services that will be rotating through the neighborhood. As you can see, it's Woodside up at the north. So they will be coming from the Heights Church, across Sylvan, go through Woodside, down through Thalia, drop off at the park, and then circle back through Stock Ranch and back out onto Sylvan. This is kind of the fireworks area. So we will be launching from the large field, as you can see, within that red circle, and then just outside of the traffic circle in the roadway. The white identifies the crowd control area. So folks will still be able to see from across the street on the other side of the median. They'll be able to set up their blankets or their chairs and be able to watch from there, as well as from Van Marren Park. And then, of course, all in the details. So again, we'll have the shuttle, we'll have the golf carts. We will have portable restrooms onsite, a whole bunch of them. We'll have hand washing stations and hydration station. And because I couldn't control the weather, even though it's been beautiful these last couple of weeks, weather projection somewhere in the triple digits next Saturday. So we will make sure that we have some swamp coolers, some large fans with some misters out there to kind of keep the crowd cool. And then we'll have a first aid station provided by volunteers through Dignity Medical Center, and our partners with Metro Fire will also be onsite as well. So again, recap of the fun. We'll have music, food trucks, the kids' zone, all starting at 6:00. So again, recap of the fun. We'll have music, food trucks, the Kid's Zone, all starting at six o'clock. We will have our live band starting at seven, our fireworks at nine forty-five. And a lot of this will be happening in the lawn, so make sure you bring your blankets, your towels, your lawn chairs. Please no large canopies or tents, no large beach umbrellas, and just come out and join the fun. And that's it. Any questions?
Don't forget mosquito repellent.
We will have. I've got cases. Thank you for reminding me. I've got cases of mosquito repellent we will have out there. We will also have, because again, it will be warm, and some of those food truck lines might get a little bit long, we will have some water available for folks as well.
Have we told the park not to turn the water on?
Yes, so they will be, they're turning their water off on Wednesday. They will be mowing again on Friday, so it's nice and clean and fresh. We've tried to make sure we've grabbed all the details. I know this is our first, our first dog and pony show doing this, but hopefully we've got everything nailed down for next year.
I'm just disappointed all my grandkids are going camping, so.
Oh.
Put it off, do it another day.
Yeah, let's just reschedule.
We thought about that when we saw the weather projections. I thought, is it too late? We can't bump it to this weekend.
Have you seen the ten-day forecast? What's it look like?
So this morning it showed a hundred and eight.
Oh, no.
And then, as we've been checking throughout the day, of course, it's California, so, you know, throw a dart at the weather. Right now, I think it's a hundred and two, a hundred and four, so if we can keep on dropping down to maybe ninety-five, ninety-eight, I think it'll be manageable.
Absolutely.
We also have, of course, you'll start seeing a little bit more signs. We wanted to make sure we didn't inundate the community too early because sometimes we become blind to signs, but you will start seeing a lot of signs that we have going out. And we also have yard signs available for our council members, if you can put them in your neighborhoods to remind your fellow neighbors.
Thank you, Regina. Great presentation. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Our next item is Department Report Number Twelve. The subject is Fireworks Enforcement and Operation Plan by the Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the councilmembers. I'm Lieutenant Ken Lewis, and I'll be presenting our fireworks and operation plan, which outlines our strategy for ensuring safe and enjoyable Fourth of July. This plan focuses on education, prevention, and enforcement while leveraging various platforms for communication and collaboration. The Police Department has actively engaged with the community through social media platforms and the CHPD website. Regular updates, tips, firework safety, the See, Click, Fix app, and reminders about illegal fireworks will be shared to educate and inform our residents. This year, the Police Department will be distributing warning letters to neighborhoods in the past who have had illegal firework complaints and encourage residents to report any illegal activities. This letter will have a social host ordinance and include fines should you receive a citation. This proactive, this proactive approach is aimed to prevent illegal firework usage by fostering community involvement. This is something new, just to let you know. We're basically taking areas where we had large complaints, and it's basically just a warning letter, giving them all the resources they need, just to keep anybody out of trouble. This year, we're also having an amnesty program in collaboration with our regional partners, allowing individuals to voluntarily surrender illegal fireworks without facing penalties or legal consequences. This program promotes responsible behavior, reduces the potential for any accidents. So we are doing this along with SAC Sheriff and Rancho, Rancho Cordova PD. So far, we haven't received anything. The PD has conducted extensive internal meetings collaborating with our Code Enforcement Communications Division and with the Regional Fireworks Task Force. The Police Department will have a zero tolerance policy towards illegal fireworks. This approach sends a strong message. The violators will not be tolerated, and strict action will be taken against any offenders. To enhance our enforcement capabilities, the Police Department has allocated additional personnel specifically dedicated for firework enforcement. They will be teamed up with SAC Metro arson, and they'll be strictly for firework enforcement. And lastly, we encourage the public to report illegal fireworks by using the non-emergency police lines, additionally, the CHPD website and the See, Click, Fix app, which goes live the twenty-eighth of this month. Will provide, or for fireworks, will provide convenient platforms for reporting and submitting complaints. That is it for our, what we plan on doing. I do have a short video for you. We did partner with SAC Metro for a PSA. Yours truly is in it, along with Sergeant Weisenflue back there. It, it's entertaining.
Let's take a look at it.
Diana Schmidt, Supervising Fire Inspector with Metro Fire.
Matthew Rust, Paramedic Engineer with SAC Metro Fire.
Ken Lewis, Lieutenant, Citrus Heights Police Department.
Hey, Weisenflue, Sergeant, Citrus Heights Police Department.
When using fireworks, you want to make sure that you use them on a safe location. That's going to be a dry, flat surface, and you want to make sure that you're away from any overhangs like balconies or awnings. You also want to be sure that you are not near or in a grass field that may catch on fire.
We're going to talk about safe fireworks lighting practices. You're going to want to use a, a long-stemmed lighter to get in there, light the wick on the fireworks, and then get back and enjoy the celebration display with friends and family. And then, once the firework is completely exhausted, you want to put that into a metal bucket and submerge it completely. Let it sit there for twenty-four hours, and after that time, then you can properly dispose it in a garbage can.
Sergeant Weisenflue here. Please use nine-one-one for emergencies only. For non-emergency calls, please call nine-one-six, seven-two-seven, five-five-zero-zero. To make it even more convenient during our busiest firework report days, between June twenty-eighth and July fifth, you'll be able to report illegal firework activity easily through the See, Click, Fix app that's available to download free on your cell phone.
Citrus Heights has a fireworks social host ordinance in place. Violators of the ordinance may face a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine for discharging illegal fireworks or even hosting an event where illegal fireworks are discharged. Subsequent violations may face a thousand-dollar fine.
Legal fireworks can be purchased at any booth within the city of Citrus Heights. They will have a state fire marshal seal on the box.
And remember, any illegal firework can be turned into the Citrus Heights Police Department any day between eight and five. Remember to have fun and to celebrate our nation's independence, but above all else, keep it safe and keep it legal.
I would like to tell you that that was all done on one take. There are bloopers out there.
Question, do you use drones at all to ship, you know, send a drone over and see where they're coming from?
Yes, we have tried to do that in the past. It didn't really work all that well. There's a couple of different things when we're sending drones up.
Shoot your drone down, yeah.
There is that possibility, yeah. Using a drone, we generally have to have two people to operate that drone, so it's taken two officers to do that. One person's the pilot, and one person is basically his spotter, if you will. What we found, by the time they get there, one, the firework might not be going off at the point in time, or the lighting, or whatever it may be, that's going to, it's not going to get us there any quicker. So, and then trying to find out where it's coming from to launch the drone is a little bit troublesome at times. Any other questions?
Any questions from council?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Next item is Department Report Number Thirteen. The subject is Homeless Navigator Program Update.
A pleasure. Good evening, council. Very good to see you. My name is Seth Semino. I'm a Detective Sergeant of the Police Department. For the last three years, I've had the privilege to lead and supervise our special operations and now our impact team. Embedded in that team is our Homeless Outreach Navigator Program. Tonight, we will be providing you with a little rundown on the past year's statistics and where we are currently with our Homeless Outreach Navigator Program. The first slide that you see here is for highlights and overview. We were one of the first agencies in the region to have a Homeless Outreach Navigator Program. Over the years, we have developed well-established relationships with dozens of regional partners, which has been an incredible benefit for us, and readily available services for our clients for the best wraparound support and care that we can provide. Some stats for you from our Homeless Outreach Navigators. This will be for 2022. Contacted during that year, two hundred and fifteen individuals, an active caseload of one hundred and forty-five, or I'm sorry, one hundred and forty-eight of those individuals. One hundred and twelve were housed throughout the year. Twelve families were able to be placed in shelters that had minor children. Sixteen individuals were entered into recovery programs. And on average, about six to seven individuals a month were housed through the Navigator Program. Next slide, please. The next slide is our 2023 Hi-Fi Stats. Hi-Fi stands for Homeless Information Field Identification. For a couple of weeks last month, we asked our police department personnel in their travels if they contacted an unhoused individual to communicate with them and seek some feedback from them specifically involving services that the city of Citrus Heights could provide. During that two-week period of time, we were able to contact one hundred and twelve, I'm sorry, one hundred and seven unhoused individuals. Eighty-seven percent of those individuals agreed to answer our questions, all voluntary, of course. Fifty-three percent have not worked with a navigator before. Thirty percent did not want assistance from a navigator. And seventy-five percent identified as living in the city of Citrus Heights. And the vast majority of those were folks that were born here or have family or friends that are close by. Next slide, please. And some success stories about our Navigator Program. Very, been, very proud of what the city has been able to do over the last several years with this robust program, and just some, some highlights for you. An unhoused individual in Citrus Heights for thirty years is now eighteen months sober, living at Grace House, which is one of our partner recovery centers that we, we work with. This individual has reconnected with family, and during the holidays, had a chance to travel and see some more family, which was great. Two clients combined were unhoused for twenty-one years on the streets. Our navigators worked with them to help them recover through substance abuse addiction. Both are now sober, working full-time, are renting an apartment, have bought a car, and are raising their child as responsible parents. And our last success story is an unhoused individual for twenty-five years here in Citrus Heights is now four months sober and living in Grace House. She is off the streets and was sober for her daughter's wedding last month.
Is Grace House in our city?
Grace House is just outside of our city, just south of Coil. So we're, we're talking a stone's throw from our South City Limit Line. And I will turn it over to my partner, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. So I'm going to quickly go over our, our next steps with our Navigator Program. Self-help housing has provided services to Citrus Heights since 2018. They have recently dissolved due to bankruptcy in May. And we're thankful for the self-help partnership. Like Sergeant Semino has mentioned, they've done a great job. So we're very lucky to have had them for as long as we did. But after the dissolution of self-help housing, staff immediately began evaluating the alternatives to continue our navigator services. And these are the nonprofits that we did reach out to. We had conversations with on maybe transitioning the Navigator Program to one of these nonprofits. They're all great nonprofits. They focus on removing people from instability, breaking down barriers, and providing resources. So with that, I would like to announce, the city is very excited to partner, so propose partnership with Sacramento County. The city plans to enter into an MOU. At a future council meeting, we'll bring that to you. Ten of Lee, we're looking at September fourteenth. So we'll enter into that MOU with the county and SAC Covered. SAC Covered will provide the resource, the resources, the outreach services to the Citrus Heights area. Sacramento Covered is a nonprofit. They've been providing homeless care coordination to the community since nineteen ninety-eight. Since then, their programs have evolved, and they've gotten more programs over the year. But the city and the county and SAC Covered, we have a mutual desire to improve the coordination and combine the efforts to meet the needs of the unhoused in our city. This is an exciting partnership. We're confident that we'll be able to increase the efficiencies and consistency by collaborating with the county. Currently, the county is funding twenty-two full-time navigators. Sorry, they're not called navigators anymore. They're community health workers. So they are working with SAC Covered, and the proposal is to add one full-time community health worker to the Citrus Heights area this next fiscal year. All the community health workers are going to rotate in the county service areas, including Citrus Heights. So the proposed model is we'll have two lead community health workers and one lead manager to support those workers. The funding proposed is we'll have a full-time community health worker. It'll have, the worker will also have, they'll be, they'll be able to access client assistance. These are funds that will help with transportation and other financial assistance to support clients' next steps. So estimated with the full-time and the client assistance, the city's contribution is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the fiscal year. They will be a SAC Covered employee, and our, our funding source has not been identified yet, but we will be sharing that when we bring the MOU back to council for approval. So our next steps is the county's going to initiate the MOU, and they will bring it to their board, County Board of Supervisors for Approval, August twenty-second. And then we will be back to you on September fourteenth for approval of that MOU. And we would like to begin services mid-September. And that's it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Gina.
How much does the community health worker earn as an annual salary?
That's a good question. So this is just a proposal. We have not gotten to the actual final numbers.
That tells me how much, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand is being lost in administration somewhere.
So the hundred and twenty-five thousand also includes the client assistance, and that number has not been determined either.
Any other comments? I just, I've been working very closely with Supervisor Sue Frost to, to work on this program. Certainly not in a position to make any kind of announcement. All I can say is I am very optimistic that this is going to come together as, as it needs to. And, and I am, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that we can fund this through 2026. And then, at, at some point, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do after that. But hopeful that, that there will be, we'll, we'll have this well in hand by sometime in September. So I just wanted to give credit where credit's due. Sue Frost, and as well as our staff, Ash Feeny, myself, I know you've been involved with it, Nicole. Everybody's working really hard to, to bring this program together, so please be patient with us. Thanks. Any other comments, questions? All right, can we move on to the next item, please?
The next item is City Manager Items.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, Members of City Council. Ash Feeny, your City Manager, with a couple of updates. First, I just wanted to acknowledge a strategic planning retreat that was held last Thursday. I thought that there was a lot of great dialogue that happened. I, too, and our department head team, our city attorney, we felt like it was a very productive retreat, really helped to hear what's on the minds of our city council members, and then coalesce around our next set of strategic objectives that help, you know, guide the ship, so to speak. guide the ship, so to speak. So thank you for all your robust participation in that planning retreat, and looking forward to coming back at the July 13th meeting with the strategic objectives that were discussed and agreed upon at that meeting. We'll come back with a resolution for adoption on July 13th. Also, just from the Stars and Stripes, I really want to put a shout out and recognize Regina Cave's great work on that. She has very much spearheaded this all the way through. It's got a lot of excitement, and you can tell her heart's in it, on service to the community and making sure that we're going to have a fantastic time that night, and this is on top of all the other massive amount of duties that she executes in her position. So thank you, Regina, for that. Very much looking forward to celebrating with the community on July 1st. And then, as the Navigator Program that was just discussed, I, too, am very optimistic and excited about what this opportunity can mean. I think it's going to have some terrific efficiencies that are going to be achieved by working with Sacramento County and SAC Covered. And, and the other thing that is, is been kind of neat about it is, you know, I personally, Nicole, our whole team, our command staff from PD, we've been in consistent dialogue with many of our service providers at the county, some that I, I hadn't met before. And so we're learning, too, through this process about how we can best engage with the county to provide enhanced services to our unhoused community and help, you know, facilitate some additional success stories relative to getting people housed that are willing to take that housing. You heard how important the Navigator Program has been and some of the successes that have been achieved, so looking forward to building and further advancing those successes. And that concludes my updates for tonight.
Great.
Can I ask a question? Did I hear right in the presentation that you're going to rotate these people around the county, and so the homeless person may see a different navigator? I, I thought one of the big things was our current navigator has established relationships with a lot of our homeless. Then you're going to ship her out to some other part of the county? Is that how that works?
Well, there, there will be a rotating, the, the model is to have a rotating navigator. There will be familiar faces within that rotation, too. There's, there's two that are lead workers, as well as one supervisor. The navigator is one thing that I actually am optimistic about having some rotation, is there's different individuals may respond differently to, to different personalities and different people. Gabby Yost was very successful here in the city of Citrus Heights, and I'm also glad that she's going to be a familiar face we're going to see again, who's working with SAC Covered. So we, it will be a little different model than what we've seen before. We'll continue to evaluate it as the model.
I somehow feel she was effective, when she saw these people over and over and over again, so.
And she's going to be with SAC Covered, so we'll get to see.
Then she's going to go somewhere else and not be in Citrus Heights.
I think one of the things that we've been working with SAC Covered and the county on is to let them understand that, you know, we're certainly excited to inform how the program is implemented within Citrus Heights, and I feel like we're going to have some good partners there. More to come when we get to the MOU discussion. That concludes my updates.
We'll keep the microscope there and.
Any conference of questions? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda.
Seeing none? Next item, please.
There are no further items.
All right. I hereby call this meeting adjourned at 7:54. Thank you for coming, everybody.